I think it looks like we have a majority of our school board members available at the moment. I see you see people keep moving around here Laura, Stephanie, Steve, John, myself, obviously George I see now and I don't see Amy, but we can still get started. Alright, so I'd like to call November meeting of the so we can incorporate a school board at to order at six 601. Okay, I start off by reading the notice about school board meetings, electronic school board meetings. So before we get started, we do the checklist to ensure the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As chairperson of the South Korean Cooperative School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 dash oh four and its extensions. Does public bodies authorized to meet electronically? Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following directions and links provided on our website, Number two, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Number three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A Wallace, that's A W A L L A C E at sau39.org. Number four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, will be adjourned and rescheduled. Number five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by rule call vote. And number six, finally, let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are. And if anyone else in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Right, so we'll start with Steve.
Home and alone.
Okay, Amy.
Home alone.
Home and alone.
George Torres.
I'm in my home office and alone.
And I am also home and alone in this room at the moment, so alright. So thank you for that. That brings us to our first public input. Let's see if we have anybody. I don't see any virtual hands, which is why we like to utilize this feature at the moment. So we will get right on to the next part of the agenda, meaning being the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda and or pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, can I pull one of the policies?
Okay, well, so we'll have to pull the whole policy section then. Number eight is what you're talking about, Stephanie?
Yeah.
The policy packet, okay?
Yep.
And I'm sort of just an administrative thing, but if we could pull the minutes, those minutes are from October. I wasn't appointed to the board in October, so I would abstain from those. But that's the only reason to pull something on my end.
Okay, I mean, are you, well, we can talk about this in a second, but let me get to Laura, she has her hand up. Laura, you have something you like you want to pull?
The minutes, the school calendar, the Newa map assessments and the policies.
Alright, so one, two, three and eight?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pull those for a moment. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have two items on the first page of the minutes. I was left off.
Okay, hold on, George, hold on. Does he have anything else you want to pull from the agenda at this point?
No, no, sorry.
No, it's alright. So right now, we, if I remember correctly, do we move to accept the agenda items four, five, six and seven? And then go back?
Mr. Chair, perhaps you might just go through each of the things that were pulled one by one and then just do one motion at the end. Given that things were pulled out or called out.
Thanks, thank you, Adam. Alright, so we had three people, I think, that had concerns with draft minutes. So John, just yours is quick, that was that you were you were not in the meeting on the board during that meeting. Are you mentioned anywhere on there?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
My name and I wasn't an attendee at that meeting, so.
Okay, that's fine, you can still, you're still allowed to accept the consent agenda, even though you weren't at that meeting or a board member of that meeting.
Fair point.
Okay, Laura, you had concerns with the draft minutes?
I wanted to clarify one line of a statement that I made. And that was line 194. I'd like it to say Mrs. Taylor remarked that we are part of a district that joins with other districts to create our SAU. Each individual district should be part of the selection of such an important position as the principal.
Okay. Dana, did you capture that? Okay, great. And George, you had a concern with the minutes as well?
Yes, just two quick items on line number nine and line number four forty-eight. I was left off as being in attendance.
Okay. So Danae, if you could add him back in as an attendee, because he was available and present. Okay, that's all on the minutes, right? Laura, you're concerned with the school calendar?
Yes, my concern with the school calendar is the the fact that it's stating it's starting in September 7th. And I don't like that we have late start days. If next year we're but we have voted for an eight forty-five and start and a three forty-five ending based on the last SAU meeting. I didn't see the need for late starts for the high school, perhaps early releases or go back to professional development full days off.
Okay. Anybody else have any concerns with the calendar? No? Alright, and what about your concerns, Laura, on the Alright, and what about your concerns, Laura, on the NEWA map assessment?
I'd just like Christine to talk about it a little bit. It, it would appears to me that our sophomores did not do that well, and that our freshmen did not do well. And I just wanted Christine to talk about it a little bit, that's all.
Would you like me to jump in?
I just, could I put my little comment on that too, since Laura brought it up? I, I was hoping we would discuss it, so I appreciate Laura for bringing it up. What I saw was growth targets were met or exceeded for everything except ninth grade math, and I, and so maybe to, you could highlight that, Christine, is wow, that, I mean, is that, I mean, I know that the raw number isn't that big, but it looks pretty big on the graph, given the scale, so.
Yeah, so it is tricky at the high school with the scale, because there's so few RIT points that students grow each year in the high school. So when kids are in kindergarten or first grade, they can grow, you know, 10 or 15 RIT points. Where at the high school, they're growing two or three or four or five RIT points. So that scale is very small, so it's something really important. First of all, these are incredible NWEA results, really strong, especially given our disrupted instruction last year. So this is looking from last fall to this fall, and looking to see whether the class as a whole met their target growth. And John's exactly right, all grade levels met their target growth except for ninth grade math. Please keep in mind that ninth grade math is actually reflective of eighth grade instruction. So what's really important is that the ninth grade teachers are aware that students didn't meet their growth targets, so if there are any holes or any gaps in their knowledge from last year, the ninth grade teachers are able to go back and to dive deeply into these NEWA results to be able to fill in any holes or gaps that might exist there for students. So in math, in 10th grade, students did have very strong growth. They surpassed what their target growth was. For 10th grade, that's indicative of ninth grade instruction, and then in reading, both ninth grade as well as, you know, current ninth grade and current 10th grade students exceeded, and 10th grade far exceeded their accepted, their expected growth targets. Specifically in 10th grade, which those were our South Hegan students last year, and looking at that growth, they were projected to only grow 1.1 RIT points, and you can see they grew four RIT points, so really significant growth there. It is a little tricky, because that scale is so small, because students grow so little. But I was really excited about these results. Very strong for our students with the only exception, ninth grade missing their target growth in math. But with the disrupted instruction, there, we were really expecting that to happen, and research was showing that that would happen more in math than in reading, that students would not, not grow as much as, as they would typically be predicted to grow.
Could I respond, could I respond one bit there, Pam?
Yeah, just real quick, and then I have Stephanie with her hand raised, so I'm gonna go to her after.
Okay, sorry, Stephanie, I just.
That's okay.
I, I just wanted to make the point, Christine, you didn't say this, but I presume this is true, that, that with respect to the ninth grade math, that that's a reflection on the eighth grade instruction, and what you said was that the ninth grade teachers need to be aware, which I agree with. What you didn't say, which I presume is in your brain as well, is that the eighth grade teachers need to be aware, because that's that pivotal transition point between districts, and we can't really govern that, obviously, at our district, but it's, it's as important, it seems to me, that the, that the two, that the eighth and the ninth grade teachers are at least talking with each other about that, and coming up with the solutions to, to make that transition smooth and again, keep the growth going.
Okay, Stephanie?
Yeah, Christian, I was gonna say something similar, what, what John said is that, to me, this also supports why we were talking about having a an assistant superintendent who can look at the high school and the middle school and support the crossing between the two districts, because I think that's gonna be key. You know, kudos to our last, our last year's ninth grade teachers who continue to truly teach when we were in lockdown to make sure that we had the strong growth, and I think it says a lot that, you know, I think our method of, of teaching when everything went into lockdown, whether it was through Zoom and making sure we still gave the kids all the rigor we could, it paid off, so thank you.
Okay. Great. So there's just more comments than anything else on that, and some better understanding. Then down to number eight, the policy packet. So Stephanie, you brought that up, you had some concerns?
Yeah, policy GCEB, the administrative staff recruiting. I'm still not for the policy. I would like to see it either go back to the old one with a minor tweak to clarify the one wording issue, but I would like to see more that that the school board and the community is involved in administrative hiring at the high school.
And what page is that on?
I don't know the page, but it's policy GCEB.
I'll locate it myself. Okay.
So I, you know, I, I'm willing to pull that policy out so I can vote more for the other ones.
Well, this is the.
Otherwise, I'm gonna say no to it.
Oh, understood. And so I'm going to ask Adam for some additional guidance in that area.
Okay, yeah, so this was the policy we discussed at the SAU level. I believe a couple more members at the SAU expressed some concern. Ms. Grund was certainly one of them, and she's being consistent in her concerns, which I appreciate. Perhaps that one policy should be voted on separately from the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, so is it kosher then to pull that one out of the policy packet?
Indeed, and you could take a motion from another board member to approve it.
Okay. To prove it separately.
Yeah, so you want me to make a motion to pull policy GCEB from the policy listing to be voted on separately?
I don't think you need to make a motion to pull it. I think the chair can simply pull that policy and ask for another board member to make a motion to approve it, if someone does.
Okay. Yes, Laura?
I'd also like to pull GBGA staff health and IKA grading and reporting. We don't need to discuss them, but I'd like to support the policy packet of 50 policies, but I cannot support these three policies.
Okay, well, let's pull those three for now. And we can vote on those separately. Okay, so we've pulled and I don't have the all the policy, can you? Stephanie, which one was the one you were concerned about again, please?
The administrative staff recruiting, I believe it's GCEB.
GCEB, okay, and Laura, which two?
GBGA staff health.
Okay.
And IKA grading and reporting.
Okay, so we'll pull those three from the packet. So though I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended at this point.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Stephanie, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. We'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura is yes.
And Gronster, yes, so it's unanimous, 7-0 for the consent agenda as amended. Now we can go, so I can look at the individual policies. So Stephanie and GCEB?
Yeah, I, I still would like to see more wording that the superintendent is going to include the school board more in the, or be included in the hiring, my, the hiring process for administration at the high school. The way it's worded right now, he can just bring forward his process. It does not say that the school board can say no to the process, although we could, I guess, but there's nothing that says we, we have the right to, and it doesn't say anything that the board is included in it. So I would like it go back to policy and reworded.
It's, then I'm going to ask our policy committee members, Steve and Laura, this has gone through policy committee at this point? Is that correct?
That, that, that's correct. And Laura's also been very consistent in her objection to this, I believe, so it's really, it, it, there's no point saying it back to policy committee. We should up or down vote it, and then if it fails, appoint a committee within this board to hash out new language, because the other districts are happy and may even have adopted this already.
Okay, that's what I figured. So, yeah, we'll do that. I agree with Steve, I don't think it needs to go back to the policy committee, because it's not gonna change at that level. Okay, and again, asking guidance from Adam, should we handle these one at a time, vote up or down?
Yeah, so I think each of those three policies are up for approval, and so I don't think Stephanie will be making the motion, but you know, you need to see if there's any board member that's willing to make a motion to approve policy GCEB.
As currently written, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a board member willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, George. Alright, we'll do roll call vote on, on keeping, keeping the current language.
It should be, Pam, it should be on adopting the new GCEB.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Sorry, thank you. Adopting the new GCEB as currently written in our packet.
But is, isn't there an opportunity for further discussion before the vote?
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry, John, I didn't realize you had more, so go ahead.
Well, I, I, I read the previous policy and understand the concerns, and I, I noticed notably that this is an optional policy. Here's why I tend to lean towards Stephanie and Laura's position, is because it's about, about time is of the essence with this. If the school board is not in the loop in a, in a meaningful way, at the front end of the process, and the school board is put in an impossible position at the back end of the process. Because there's not a lot of time, if there's a candidate, to say, to say no, or yes, or no, or get, get a new superintendent. I mean, that puts the school board in an untenable position. I don't think it's allowed to ask at the same time of this, of the superintendent to make an exception to the normal rule, and maybe the statutory minimums, to include the board at the beginning of the process for such an important role as a principal, or an assistant principal. And we're not talking about every staff member here. We're talking about really the, the tip of the spear in terms of our leadership. And I thought the old policy, how, maybe it was ambiguous in certain ways. I, I read it very carefully a bunch of times, and maybe that could be improved, but I liked what it seemed to want to say, which was to require the superintendent to involve the school board at some level in the hiring process for those important and critical leadership positions. And this new policy is, completely removes all of that process, and for that reason, I'm, I'm I'm not, I'm not happy really about the, about the new policy as written.
Okay, one second, please. Alright. Okay, so then you're saying it should go back to the policy committee to be rewritten just for So We Can?
Well, or, or as Steve suggested, that, that if it's, if going back to the policy committee itself is futile, then maybe it, maybe unfortunately, as much as we try to harmonize our policies across all the districts, you know, maybe this is an exception, I don't know, or maybe the other school boards, if they see some attractive language that we come up with at our board, maybe they'll adopt, adopt our policy, and we can't have it harmonized, the policy across the boards. It's just because they've adopted this one, doesn't mean at their next meeting, they couldn't start the process to adopt a revision.
Certainly, no, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand the process of who is responsible for and, you know, write rewriting this policy in our case.
I'd be happy to be a part of that process. It's, it's in my wheelhouse, that kind of word smithing, so I'd be happy to be a part of that process.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments before we move forward with the motion on the floor? Seeing none? Okay, I'll go through a roll call vote of accepting the policy as currently presented in the policy packet, otherwise, you know, voting yes stays the same, voting no means that, well, opportunity for rewrite. Okay, so I'll start with Steve.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Where am I? John?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
Laura? I didn't hear you, sorry, Laura, can you repeat?
Taylor, no.
Thank you. George?
Torres, yes.
Alright, three to three. I understand everyone's concern. But I think I'm gonna stick with the language as currently written, so I'm gonna vote yes on that. Okay, so motion passes four to three. Stay as written in the policy packet. Hey. Laura, you had a concern with GBGA?
Yes, I voiced it before. I don't like having mental health listed in the choice of the superintendent to, the law says medical evaluation. And once you go to a licensed health provider, that's different than saying a physician, which is what the law says. And inimical is an ambiguous word. I don't like the use of inimical, inimical in the policy. So those are my reservations about that policy. And also, there's no it gives, it doesn't have any you don't have to meet any standard, it doesn't evaluate like any standard that has to be met before this is required.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or concerns about this policy?
No, but I'll happily make a motion to adopt it.
Okay.
GBGA.
Thank you, Steve.
And I do have a comment, Pam, but when you, when we get to it.
Alright, so do I have a second? No seconds? I'll second a motion, just so we can get it on the table, start talking about it. Okay, so go ahead, John.
Yeah. I wonder if there might be some better language. It, it seems like an impossible situation to put the superintendent in the position to distinguish between a mental or a physical reason to require a staff to seek medical attention. This shouldn't be invisible, actually. I mean, it should be the medical professional to make that decision as to whether or not any particular concern is a physical one or a mental one, or I mean, it should be the medical professional to make that decision as to whether or not any particular concern is a physical one or a mental one or mixture of both. So while I don't oppose the concept of the superintendent. Being able to direct a staff to seek medical attention, I I don't I don't know that the distinct distinction between mental or physical is really in the purview of the superintendent.
I'll support John on that comment. That is exactly where I think the issue lies.
Okay, anybody else have a question or concern on this? Are you raising your hand, Steve?
I am, in all places I can. Um yeah, so um I I I think that uh. John and Laura may be reading more into this policy than is there. This enables the superintendent to observe a behavior in a staff member and decide to send them for medical evaluation. It does not. Require or allow or or. Otherwise force him to make a distinction about what's causing that troublesome behavior, either physical or psychological. So um I I think it's 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 more a question of in in day day operation, the superintendent is going to see, not the superintendent. The principal in general, who they call the superintendent, is going to see aberrant behavior that they that they believe. Is not helpful in a classroom. I think that's a nice way to put it. And ask for medical evaluation and then a physician will decide whether it's a physical, medical or psychological issue. So it's um, you know, we're not, we're not empowering anybody in administration to make that determination. We're unable to enable them to see behavior and send the staff member off to an expert to make a determination. And if I think if the problem was in fact. Psychological. Then and the and the policy said only medical, then and the doctor determined it was a psychological issue. Then the staff member might have a grievance because hey, you weren't empowered to send me to a doctor for a psychological issue. So why'd you do that? Whereas here it it enables any possible underlying condition that causes a behavior to be addressed.
Good, thanks for that, Steve. Okay, Laura, have your hand up?
Yes, the law says that the superintendent can send any employee for medical evaluation. They're medically capable. I just I don't think the superintendent, for all of his talents in our district, should necessarily. What qualifications? Uh will the superintendent have to make that determination and what certifications do they have to make that determination? To distinguish between mental and. And medical.
Okay. John?
Yeah, um I I wonder whether the the policy language, when it says. The superintendent can request the examination if at any time he or she has reason to believe. The health may be. And inimical to the welfare of others. I I wonder if implied in that, although it's not expressed. If there that reason has to be documented in some manner. I wouldn't want the superintendent to be put in a position. And I wouldn't want an impression out there. That any old reason, like it has should be a reasonable reason or a or some kind of. Some kind of record, it seems to me, would need to be. Put forth or complaints received or something. I I don't I don't quite see where the trigger is and that's the protection of our superintendent, by the way. As well as the employee, I mean. Any old reason may not be a legitimate reason. It could be a personal reason and that. It seems like we could find some language to cover, to provide some cover for the superintendent and by extension for the school board and. And some protection for the employees, that the reason has to be. Has to be. Had some basis in in reasonableness.
Okay, well, um. I understand everybody's points and they're well taken. I think we need to move forward with a vote on this. We did talk about this previously. This is like the third time now that we've talked about these specifically. So let's move forward with the vote on this um G B G A and then right after that on move over to I K A. Alright, we're starting to eat into other times and I want to make sure we have enough time to go through our budget discussion since that's one of the most important things that we're here for. So um. We have a motion on the floor and we're going to do a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Uh John?
No.
Uh Laura? Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
George?
Or is yes.
And Gronster, yes, so passes four to three. Move on to I K A, you have a motion to accept as in the policy packet.
I'll move to adopt I K A as proposed.
Okay, thank you. Have a second. Anyone?
I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. I know we've had multiple discussions on this as well. I just want to go right to uh the vote because, like I said, we have lots of other things that. Uh need important uh need time because they're very important as well. So I'm going to go Steve uh. Roll call vote to Steve, sorry, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Um Stephanie?
Yes.
Oh, slightly out of order. Sorry, John? Yes. Uh Laura?
Voting no because I don't feel that it adequately allows students to move forward. I was last time we discussed this, I was sent to another policy about moving students forward and that's only. Per credit, like an entire class you can get credit for by testing. And part of mastery based learning is that they could move forward once they've mastered individual competencies.
Okay, thank you for stating that. Alright, um so that's a no. George?
Or is yes.
Gronster, yes. So motion passes six to one. Alright. And that finishes up finally the items from our consent agenda. So right now, let's move on to the next part of the agenda, the first reading of policy D I D about fixed assets. Um as you saw from Steve, he forwarded on the um corrected version. It's very short, to the point. Does anybody have any concerns? If not, then um.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Uh my only question is concerning the uh ten thousand dollar purchase price. Assuming it's it's related to a capital asset purchase, what if a purchase is it's required for something made in bulk? Or individually, it's less than ten thousand dollars, but because of the timing, let's say, for instance, desks. Or laptops, something along those lines. Do those necessarily qualify under this policy and would those be capitalized? Assuming that they were all purchased in bulk. And they were over the five year requirement.
I'd like to pass that on to somebody who probably knows the answer that that would not start with the first three letters of P I M.
Michelle, would you be willing to take that question?
Sure, I can help with that. Um typically, you you will look at the the situation that leads to that order if. Items purchased in bulk are part of um. For instance, a construction project, then that may be part of a larger capital item. Traditionally, if the items are exceeding a useful life of a year of, you know, multiple useful life. And exceed the threshold for capitalization and were purchased together, then they would be capitalized.
So um as a follow up, then let's say we just had uh an emergency purchase of a a couple of laptops. So ordinarily, they probably wouldn't fall over ten grand. Let's say if it was only two or three of them, those would just be expensed in that regard. Just due to the timing.
Right, right.
Okay.
Could I could I interject one thing, George? I mean, there's a difference between a capital asset and a durable goods. I mean, there's paragraph one about capital assets. And and then the inventory of durable goods, which I'd argue compute laptops are a part of, there is no dollar limit. Unless I misreading that policy, maybe Steve can can chime in on that.
Well, let me, if I could jump in for just a minute, the capitalization becomes relevant when we start looking at. Our audited financial statements, for instance. And determining what depreciation would be on our items. It's really intended to provide. The reader of our financial statement, some indication of the value of capital items that are held by the school district. The policy is a guide. It's not necessarily one hundred percent black and white and there are times when some judgment calls are are needed and it at the time when you have. Purchase of multiple items that are typically below the threshold, but together exceed the threshold. Then it would warrant some discussion and at times we do also reach out to our auditors. For guidance on those types of things and how it affects the financial statements.
Okay, can I say, can I say something too?
Yep, sorry, Steve, go ahead.
And um sort of to Michelle's point, but. I'm putting my my grumpy old man hat on here. This is a stupid thing that Gatsby makes us do that. It makes no sense at all. Because we don't depreciate anything. We spend cash and then it dies after a while. You put this in place, I guess, so people like George who come from. Normal businesses can read our financial statements and see them read them in the same way they would read a real business's financial statements. It has absolutely no bearing on our finances or operations. It's an exercise. It's like the Accountant's Full Employment Act. And we spent too much time on this because it is pointless. End of rant.
Thank you for that translation, Steve. Great, okay, so um do we just forward this to for a second reading um at the next meeting or do I, yes, okay? I don't need a motion for that, right? Okay, so we'll forward it to the second for to the next meeting for our second reading. Alright, that brings us to the next point and we have a presentation by the J F A C and I presume that's why Victoria is here.
It is. Are you ready? So Victoria, I was just going to give a brief intro.
Oh, sure, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
That's okay.
Amy and Victoria take over the stage for a while and I'll be on mute. Thank you.
Hold on, my printer is just printing. I don't know why, I'm sorry. Hang on one second. Embarrassing. Okay. So um as you know, J F A C's recommendations for building projects have been accepted by the Emmer School Board. And they're planning to present a warrant article for approval of a bond to fund a new pre case. School and a renovation project at the Embers Middle School. So tonight, J F A C would like to present the recommendations for projects that have been identified as priority projects. That are included in the larger Sohegan two point O project, which was originally scoped several years ago. These projects were presented within the larger S U board presentation that you saw last month. Since then, in the interest of our tight timeline timeframe to determine budgets and warrant articles, a subcommittee of J F A C worked. Over this past week, thank you, to refine the scope and costs of the three projects identified as priorities. Victoria Precy, who chaired this subcommittee, will be presenting the recommendations for board consideration. Before I turn it over to Victoria, please note that tonight's presentation does not include the larger two point O project. Which was originally scoped, as I said several years ago. J F A C recommended that this project be considered for funding at a later date. The possibility of making annual deposits to a reserve fund to level the tax rate and reduce the overall debt required. To fund the larger Sohegan two point O project has also been discussed and we can spend more time on this when the board is ready. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Victoria, who graciously chaired the uh Sohegan two point O subcommittee and worked over this past Thanksgiving week. With a few other folks to be able to present this more refined uh presentation to you folks tonight. So thank you, Victoria.
Thanks, Amy. Um I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Alright, um so a little bit of my introduction was much of what Amy just covered. Um so I'm just going to kind of piggyback on what she said. I want everyone to keep in mind that this has been a few years in the making. Um in that time, we've had a change in administration. Um and it's really important to note that during our principal Mike Berry's first year, he's also dealing with COVID. So while we have asked him his preferences on some of these uh changes. As a subcommittee, we also think that more time is not uh not a bad thing for everyone to understand both where Rob Scully was coming from with these ideas. But also where the district is going as a whole with the strategic vision to make all of Sohegan two point O, which is the larger scope project, the larger report, to make all of those things fit in. What we're doing here is giving you a partial renovation and refurbishment suggestions. All of these things are to be determined by the board's choice. So keep that in mind that you all are being paid the big bucks and we are the workers who are getting you lots of information. And I have Lance Whitehead, who is from La Valley Brensinger on this call. He's happy to give some more information and we also have other people standing by who are on the subcommittee. If any questions arise that I don't have answers to. So as a subcommittee, we identified four priorities. They are the H V A C system, the to secure the main entrance, the science labs and the locker rooms. Um after working with our director of facilities and our superintendent, um we have been told that H V A C systems will be covered. Uh when it comes to your operating budget and other financial mechanisms like that. So we, as a subcommittee, um removed that from our scope of work. That brings us to securing the main entrance as our first suggestion. So the main entrance of Sohegan, if you think about when you enter, you actually enter into a hallway and that hallway is accessible to staff and students. So community council has worked on a safety analysis that suggests closing off that campus or I'm sorry, closing off that entrance so that it goes directly into um the the. Oh my goodness, uh it goes directly into the office area and in that office area, then people would have to be able to be buzzed further. This is just one level of that safety analysis. So if safety is something that the board thinks they should be um jumping into, this is something that you can that you can look into. Next up are the science labs. Our current science labs in the annex lack adequate space. When we say that, we are saying that the annex labs are about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred square feet. And per the New Hampshire Department of Education, they should be around twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square feet. So you hear that, you know, those numbers are very different. The board, as well as your superintendent, have identified the science labs as a place of needed improvement for your curriculum. And finally, the locker rooms, we've all seen the pictures. We've all probably been through there to see that the locker rooms are in need of repair and renovation. There are a variety of ways that you can go about fixing these locker rooms. So this slide, all of these slides have been sent to the board ahead of time. Um so I'll go through the slides and then at the end, if there are questions, I can go back to them. This is showing the three options for securing your main entrance. You have the red outline, which would cost seven hundred and sixteen thousand. You have the green outline, which is four hundred thousand and you have the blue outline, which is two hundred and fifty. As a subcommittee, we have talked with Mike Berry. Um at this time, our subcommittee. At this time, our subcommittee supports the blue outline. These projects can be done separately. But these projects don't need to be done in entirety if you are not kind of changing the whole center of the building at Sohegan. If you were to change the whole center of the building at Sohegan, which is part of the Sohegan 2.0 plan, then you would need to do the red outline. But without doing that part of the project, the blue outline is sufficient. These are the science labs. So you can see that we currently have six science labs up there. And this shows really the space that we're talking about. When we say 750 to 800 square feet, it's too small for, not per, you know, a number that we came up with, but per the New Hampshire Department of Education. So what we can do is we can change around some walls and we can turn this into three larger rooms. And those would come at varying costs. Something that's also important to note is that in the Sohegan 2.0 project, the science labs that are in the main building were also mentioned. When we began focusing on our priorities, we were focusing on the science labs in the annex and not on those that are in the main building. While we've worked further and further, it's really come to our attention that maybe an overall, giving Mike Berry a little bit of time to talk more with the science department and really figure out the direction and the strategic vision of how these rooms will be used for science is needed before all of your money goes into these labs and none of your money goes into the chem labs that are in the main building. And these are the locker rooms. So again, we have three cost options for you. You can do what is in Sohegan 2.0, which is a $1.1 million renovation. It would change your locker rooms, put them on the same floor and create team rooms upstairs. Another option is to do the lower floor only. This would not create the team rooms upstairs. That would be 750,000. Or if you're looking to simply replace some broken lockers, it would be around 75,000. That number would not include changing things like lighting, any of the spaces that are used. It would simply be replacing in, in kind, in nicer condition. So for future projects, we've told you that there are other parts of Sohegan 2.0 that are really worth looking into. Everything needs to tie into the strategic vision. So when you're choosing future projects, that's exactly what you should be doing is looking at your strategic vision for how it works. However, as a subcommittee, we were really tasked as pulling out the priorities. And so that's what we've done. We've pulled out the priorities that we think are worth, worth the most focus at this time. So when it comes to the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee Subcommittee Recommendation, again, ultimately, the board will need to determine the scope, the timing and the funding for all projects. With that being said, Joint Facilities Advisory Committee was tasked with conducting an analysis of the state of public education facilities in Amherst and really being aware of the tax impact to the Amherst resident. Because of that, we suggest waiting to fund these improvements until you can do so without additional taxpayer impact or after ASD has advanced their facilities project. And again, our, our suggestions would be to do the following. First being the main entrance to secure that. And then your choices of the locker rooms at a low price and the science labs, starting at one science lab. These are our lowest dollar amounts that we can suggest from the projects that I just outlined. When we were really looking at these, we were thinking that if your goal is to achieve the most impact in the quickest manner, this is the way that we would achieve that. So that was part of our, our lens when we were looking at this. And that brings us to the end. So I am happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. That will help me see more people if there are questions.
Awesome. Well, I'd like to take a second just to thank Victoria. It was a great presentation. I've seen a lot of that as, you know, being a member on J-FAC, but I thought this was really well put together. So thank you for that. And obviously, thank you to Amy for chairing the committee. So do we have questions for Victoria? Use the raise your hand feature, please. John.
Yeah, I really appreciate, just to echo Pam. Wonderful work. We're so grateful in this town to have things like J-FAC and Sohegan Finance Advisory and Ways and Means and it's very helpful. So I echo what Pam said. And I appreciate what Victoria said about connecting these projects to the strategic vision. And one thing I didn't see a connection with in the presentation is a, these are the priority projects because they connect to the strategic vision in these ways. So it's implied. And it would be helpful at some point to have those connections. Why these projects and not others? Where do they connect to the strategic vision? And why are they the top priorities as opposed to other projects? I don't mean it as a hard critique. I just mean it as completing the argument. Be really helpful for us as a community to be able to persuade our community members to support these recommendations.
Yep. Thanks for that, John. I think Victoria's got some answers for you. So go ahead, Victoria.
Yep, I can, I can give you some answers. So from the security standpoint, securing the main entrance, that's something that Community Council has already been working on. Community Council therefore is working with administration on that. And that's already something that is in the works as being important. So that's kind of where our, our site of it being part of the, the vision came in. It doesn't necessarily have to be the vision of teaching the children, but of securing the campus and keeping everyone safe. And then when it comes to the science labs, we were told that that is the number one curricular need by your superintendent. So that's where it comes in for your strategic vision there. And honestly, your locker rooms are just broken and they need to be fixed. So when it comes to the lockers themselves, that's, that's really as far as it goes. I don't know if that necessarily is, is, you know, a large shiny project that connects to strategic vision, but it is something that maintains our school and maintains the facility.
Thank you for that. So I have Steve and then Stephanie after that. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just gonna throw a monkey wrench into the discussion here. I, I have a personal, apparently unexpressed to anyone else, so it's a surprise to everyone, a higher security priority than securing the main entrance, which is securing the passage between the main building and the annex. We have an adequate, it ain't great, but an adequate security solution in the main entrance. We have zero security solution in the passage between the main building and the annex. And I don't know if Lance remembers this, but in one of the very early walkthroughs for Sohegan 2.0, we stood, a group of us stood out, out in that patio between the two buildings and briefly hypothesized turning that area into a walled garden, a courtyard with a secure wall on either side so that we could leave, we could take the doors off if it was a more nice climate around here. We could take the doors off between the main building and the annex and there would be free flow. And a wall, a nicely landscaped wall, I hope, would, would secure that area. And we could have easy access and kids out there playing in three seasons with their hacky sacks and their frisbees and whatever. And, and closing a major gap, we cannot secure the campus until that hole is fixed. So I would, I'm wondering if that thought occurred to J-FAC? And if it did, why it wasn't on the list? And if it didn't, I'm just gonna throw this out to screw up your whole plan now.
No, it, it doesn't mess up our plan, I promise. It is part of the scope, part of the 10 scopes. They were part of Sohegan 2.0. Lance may have numbers to be able to tell us what those numbers were. When we were looking at it, it, that's a bigger question really philosophically for the board than it is for a subcommittee of volunteers. So Lance, I'm gonna pitch it to you first and then I believe Stephanie or Jeannie might wanna also jump in on this.
Sure. So we packaged the site upgrades and included that courtyard in the fencing. Just as you recall, to be able to create a secure courtyard between the two buildings. The total site package was about a million dollars. Now, the million dollars also included prep for the, as you may recall, and we had a facilities maintenance building that was out by the fields that we were proposing. If you were just to look at that courtyard, I think your, your upgrades there, if I tally them approximately, is about $600,000 in construction. So the project would be in that scale. We have not, that's not a detailed number. That's just what we, if I extracted out of the original Sohegan 2.0 in those scopes.
Stephanie?
Yeah, you know, Steve, we did talk about the the walkway between the two buildings. And one of the things that came up was there's not an easy solution to that because that pathway between the two buildings needs to remain open based on the fire department. So it's not as easy as just walling it off and closing it off. We either have to make like one whole building or we have to find a way to elevate the pathway so the fire trucks can get under or something. So it is a bigger problem, if I remember correctly, and which would be a much more expensive problem.
Jeannie, do you wanna jump in also?
Right. Could, I just wanna piggyback on that because I was part of the, actually the, I know this goes way back to the Annex Building Committee. And we had wanted to connect the two buildings. As Stephanie indicated, we were not allowed to because there had to be fire access, fire, you know, unless we went around the building, which we cannot do at this point. But, and then elevating a walkway was another consideration. But again, the fire department said they couldn't get their fire engines underneath it. So if we can find a way to do that, that would be great. But at the moment, that's, that is a vulnerable spot. You're right, Steve. The one thing that I've often thought would be useful is for us, you know, to have a swipe system of cards as part of this whole security system, as well as to have an SRO who is planted in that spot whenever there's class, classes changing. That would help a great deal. So it is a problem. It's not a, a cheap problem to solve.
If I could just say, I, I understand the fire department access thing is an issue. I, I certainly, when we talked about the wall courtyard area, envisioned having to put a roadway around the annex so they could circumnavigate the whole building. I'm sure there's, the fire department shares the competing goals of giving them good access to the building in case of an emergency and securing the building. And we could, we could find something that will work for both of us if we sit down and talk with them. I don't think it's a, a black and white. The fire department will never allow that.
I see Lance would like to pipe in on that and then Laura, then to move the discussion on.
Just a reminder, the, the Sohegan 2.0 project includes a courtyard with a fire department gate on both sides that would meet the needs of fire access road. That would need to be approved by the fire department. And that is what essentially is in the, the, the project cost that we had broken out earlier. The proposed solution would be a secure courtyard with opaque gates that the fire department has a knox box on key access to and an ability to get through in case of emergency. That has been done on other school projects. It does need, it does need review from your local fire department as well as the state fire marshal to approve that setup.
Good example why we hire good architects. Thank you.
Okay, Laura?
I just wanted to know, are we proposing putting something on the ballot for March to fulfill some of these needs? And if so, do we know what we have to work with financially?
So that's gonna be part of our actual budget discussion. We're gonna talk whether or not we can, this, this is something that we wanted to put in, figure out if we can put into the budget or exactly what the best way to move forward with financing something like this. Okay, Stephanie, and then we need to get rid of, to move on soon.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna ask, ask something similar to Laura, but then I'll wait till the budget discussion because my, my points are gonna be around how we potentially could fund each of these. So I'll hold off.
Great, perfect. Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Victoria, other than Victoria?
Before I sign, before I sign off, I'll, I'll let you guys have, you know, do your budget discussion. I just want to, to make sure that everyone is aware that the purpose of the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, again, that was built from your SAU board, was to make sure that all of these numbers were really playing together. All the Sohegan numbers and the Amherst numbers are playing together. And we know that Amherst is putting large asks on the ballot. We're really looking forward to understanding that in a lot of these situations that, that Lance has worked with through La Valley Brensinger, towns often have to take turns. And this might be one of those moments where we have to take some turns and we have to be a little bit creative of how we can fund things without putting everything on the ballot in all these different districts and having, you know, having little success if we do it that way. Just my two cents before I sign off.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion on this, I again will say thank you to Victoria for the presentation. I think it was very well taken, done. And we have something, some items to discuss that are in our next topic here regarding this. So thanks again and feel free to hang out and watch or not. Okay. So let's move on to our budget discussion then. To set the table, I would pass it over to Adam. Would you like to take care of the setting the table portion?
Indeed. So we have our Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee this evening. I believe they are here for more than just comment. I believe that they have some comments to make. And in addition, now is when the board is starting to finalize what might be on the ballot. At your next meeting in December, which is right now scheduled for December 21st, is where you'll need to finalize what goes forward at public hearing in January. So this is the second to last chance for the board to get to a place where we're ready to finalize the budget. So I think you should hear from the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee, whatever comments they would like to make and then move on towards board discussion about where the budget stands. And then also think through the warrant articles, including what we just heard from the Joint Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Adam. So I will invite Joel Gordon as the Chair of the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee to present us with the findings of your committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And it's good to be here. What I'd like to do is have just a very short PowerPoint presentation, only a few slides. And so if I could share my screen with you, I can put those up for you. And that's not it. Let's try that one again. Which screens are you seeing? Cause I can't see them. Can you see this, this presentation?
We can see desktop, including the PowerPoint, yes.
How's that?
Yeah.
Now, if you wanna go into your PowerPoint slide presentation mode.
I would. And what I'd like to do first is really thank everybody that's on this Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. It's a really good group of people. This is my second year participating in it. Some of us on the committee have been here a lot more years. We have representatives both of, obviously from Mount Vernon and from Amherst. And each of us members took a different section of the, of the budget. So, you know, we have seven different individual reports. A lot of the school board members have worked with the SAFC members in the subcommittee meetings, who went over the specific parts of the thing, parts of the budget. And you can see where the board, you know, liaison members are. What I would like to do also is thank Michelle, who's been really awesome in helping set up the whole process that we've gone through this year, as well as Sue and Abby from Adam's office, who really, you know, have done a great job helping to coordinate everything that we, that we've got, that we, we've done so far. Just wanted to give you the, from our perspective, you know, we're looking Just wanted to give you the, from our perspective, you know, we're looking at this as, we don't run the school. We're just looking at the budgets to see if, whether we think there's, you know, they're being presented in a reasonable manner. We dig a couple of levels deep. And there's a few things that, you know, that, that we look at as, you know, kind of a high level metric. One is what the enrollment is. Clearly, you know, operating a school is all about serving the students. And so we're looking at the, the enrollment over a period of time. And what we, what we see, I guess, going into, you know, this year, which is an unusual year, is a pretty significant decline in enrollment. The budget for next year has it going pretty much back up to what the expectation was when it was budgeted for fiscal year 21. The budget, of course, for fiscal year 21 is about $18.7 million. That number includes $165,000 of the warrant article that was subject to, that, that is kind of a placeholder in the budget. Because the fiscal 20 budget also included the $100,000 warrant, warrant article that was there. So we're comparing apples to apples and, and what this Sauk Hegan school, with, with the high school is going to be asking of the voters to approve. And so, you know, what we're looking at for the 2022, $19.5 million, which is a 4.1% increase year over year. A little higher than one might expect, given the expected increases that you would see in salary across the board. Again, from looking at the three-year average, the $17.4 million, three, three-year average, 11.4% over a three-year average. So we're beginning to see, you know, some, what I would call some acceleration in growth there. You know, especially when you're comparing it against the, the inflation over the same period of time. Without going into the details within the budget themselves, I think one of the things that is a consistent theme that we've had as a committee. Is that there needs to be a better articulation of the strategic direction. That the school is heading in and that the, and, and from a budgeting standpoint, that the budget reflects the priorities, you know, of, of the school district. And we continue to struggle with making the connection between what the budgets are presenting versus what the strategic objectives are of the school. It's there, but I don't think it's, I, I, we don't think that, that it's as, as clear and, and direct as it, as it could be. The other part that goes along with that is the second recommendation from a process standpoint. That we really, that we believe that we're missing a multi-year budget because we're having a difficult time. Assessing how the current year budget is going to fit in to the future, you know, into, into the future as you begin to execute on that. Strategic vision. And it also provides a tool so that we could evaluate the follow-through on the prior year priorities. There's been a number of items that were, were issues from a prior year, unresolved questions. And without the ability to track those over time, they seem to, as priorities change, those items seem, seem to. Get de-emphasized. And third is. There, and, and we're sure they're there, but we don't see them as well. And this goes along with the strategic plan, a comprehensive set of metrics that should be developed and applied over time. So that we can focus on what the goals of this, of, of the district are as relates to performance of the school. And we can begin to track them and evaluate them to make sure that the, you know, the budgeting reflects the priorities again. And then I think part of that, or separate item on that is we've had a lot of conversations that as relates to staffing needs, without understanding what the master schedule looks like. It's unclear how the, the requirement for teaching, teaching staff is supportable. And, and it doesn't appear to be as transparent as it could be. So that's four recommendations. So take a pause there and see if there's anybody on the SAFC that would like to make a comment on that or any of these so far. Okay. So let me hit the last slide and, and then we'll turn it back to you, Kim. Initial recommendations at this point, the process this year, I think, has been a lot better. There was some confusion early on because of the switch over from the old Outlook accounts to the Gmail accounts. And, and a lot of us lost access for a period of time without knowing that we'd lost access. Having Stephanie on this committee as an ex-official member has been great. And frankly, the participation from a number of other school board members is part of the SAF process. I think has added a significant amount of understanding on what's going on within, in the school and what the, some of those objectives are. Couple of points just to hit from a financial standpoint, which is really what we're here to focus on. Is the significant increase this year obviously has been the New Hampshire retirement obligation for pension funding. And at this point, we believe it needs to be better understood with the potential future impact of that is over time. And to see and evaluate what steps there might be in order to mitigate growth, the growth of this particular line item. The, this, this PowerPoint goes into a little more detail as you go through the curriculum part of the budget. And, but, but that is becoming a pretty significant line item. And, and the, the, the school board should understand how that will, how that will affect the budgets going forward. Just as a comment, the default budget, I guess, for the second year in a row is very close to the proposed budget. And it doesn't feel like it gives the voters much say as to what's going on in the school district, which could, could be good in the short run, but perhaps over the long run, it might not be particularly helpful. Reaching out. And then we don't have a, we don't have a final recommendation yet. As we're just finalizing our, our process, we're gonna, I know we have scheduled the December 7th budget workshop with the, with the school board and we'll be following up after that. With a, with a, a, a recommendation. Prior to your, to your board meeting on the, what was it, the 20, 23rd? Of December. And so with that, if I could see if any, anybody else is interested in, in. Commenting. I'm not seeing anybody. So Kim, I will turn it back to you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Joel. And everybody on the SAFC. That was, oh, there's a lot of work. And in the past, I will say that I was not privy to the amount of meetings that are typically would go through. And since Michelle put together the schedule for this year, I was able to see that. And obviously there's a lot of work that goes into it. So thank you, all the volunteers who came, stepped up and took part of this. Cause this is important, you know, we need that feedback as well. And so, you know, we, we utilize the stuff that you say to, to help us form. The parts of the budget that are important as well. So. Does anybody have any particular, anybody on the board have any particular questions or concerns for Joel or any parts of the? Budget. And I see Steve Coughlin's virtual hand and I see Amy's real hand. So I'll go in that order and then we'll see what else should goes in. So go ahead, Steve.
I'll, I'll, I'll agree with Joel that, that. Our share of retirement system costs is. Just an, an ever-evolving larger snowball of a problem. A question for Adam, is he ready to unmute himself? Are we required to participate in the retirement system or is it optional?
They're required by, I think it's RSA 100 or RSA 100A.
Okay. So it's not something we could fix by offering an alternative retirement plan to our staff that costs less?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. So then there's really nothing else to say there. We're, we're caught in a trap.
Indeed. I agree.
Well, I, you know, let me, let me just step up. We can, we can ignore it and then spring it on the voters every year. That's something that's uncontrollable, or we can schedule it out so the voters understand it. And perhaps there's other options that we by ourselves as a separate district can't necessarily handle. But it could be done perhaps legislatively, assuming that all school districts that have to participate in the same program are required to do this as well.
Oh, it's not just every school district, it's every municipality as well.
And, and, and so it's a much bigger problem that, you know, if, if it's not addressed and at least. Vocalized as, as the issue will continue to not be resolved.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. And for those who've heard this before, I apologize, but I have strong opinions about this particular topic. So right now, the way New Hampshire retirement system is funded is every employee contributes 7% themselves directly from their paycheck. And the school district pays a, an amount set by the New Hampshire retirement system. And this is the amount Mr. Gordon is referring to. It used to be that the retirement system was funded partially by the state through the state's budget. And mostly by the employee. Well, for many years, the state did not contribute to the New Hampshire retirement system as they ought, as they should have through budgeting. And now as a result, we have an unfunded accrued actuarial liability. That is about eight years into being paid off and will take 30 years to be paid off in total to close the gap and to fully fund the, the pension system. And so as it stands right now, according to the New Hampshire retirement system, over 90% of my future pension and every other employee's future pension. Is covered by their 7% contributions, meaning I'm effectively almost completely funding my own pension. The millions of dollars that we have to pay as taxpayers is going to close the gap that was created by the legislature many years ago. Which by the way, also got out of the business of funding it altogether and downshifted all of the cost to local municipalities. And going one step further, I believe, and, and this number might be off a little bit. The state closes most recent biennium with 195 or 198 million dollar surplus at the end of the state's budget biennium. And so the cost of New Hampshire retirement has been driven up by poor choices at the legislative level at the state. Downshifted to the localities to pay for and cover up, not cover up, but to cover the cost of those, that unfunded accrued actuarial liability, which I think is completely unfair. Rant over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if I, if, if I might, Mr. Chair?
Uh, go ahead, Joel. Then I have to get to my board. Go ahead.
You got it. Adam, question for you. So you had mentioned that your 7% contribution contributes to about 90% of your pension. Potential pen, pension benefits at, at retirement. And, and the contribution on the part of, of the district is now 21%? And, and you're saying that's going to make up the shortfall that the pension, New Hampshire Pension Board. System failed to cover in enough years and years ago? So the, the, at, at your 7% rate, you're saying that you're going to be fully covered on a going forward basis? And the problem is we need that this, the New Hampshire retirement system has to make up for unfunded contributions prior to that.
That's exactly right. Right. But those decisions, I, I want to make sure the blame is placed properly. The New Hampshire retirement system did not make the choice of how much to fund the system. It was the state legislature that made those choices in the, in the, I believe, the 80s and 90s.
Or to how much that un, underfund those systems?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you for that, Adam and Joel for his question. Amy is next up. And then I think I have Stephanie after that. So I don't, sorry, John, John after that.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, thank you, Joel and the entire committee. We always greatly appreciate all the, the heavy lifting that you guys do. Just wondering if you could provide us with your PowerPoint presentation? There were a number of things in there that I just, I want to reflect on. And be able to, to speak to at our next meeting. I, I did have a question on the. Comment regarding the default budget. And I'm just wondering, you know. How, how would you recommend presenting to the community? If the, if the actual budget being presented is close to the default? I, I would hate to think that we would create some sort of artificial budget just to allow for voter choice. So I, I think that's not really how budgets are developed. So I just wondering if you could comment on that particular bullet point?
Thank you, Amy. At the risk of stepping a little outside the official SAFC. Position, I think, because we, we, I don't think have a formal position on this, but. What I, what I think part of the issue is, is how the district considers the. Compensation, the, the, the compensation policy as a firm contractual obligation of the school system year after year. In other words, as, as you look at next year's budget, every. The, the step increase across all the salary levels are considered as part of the default budget. They're, they're currently, or they're vacant, they're vacant staffing positions that are included in the default budget. Some perhaps not necessarily being intended to be filled. And I think that's, you know, clearly. Operating that the school, a significant portion of the budget is, is salaries. And if salaries are baked in and, and fixed every year, there's not a lot that you can do to adjust those. And we're seeing that, you know, in a pretty significant way this year as well. That's a policy of the school. It's, I know there's a lot of debate whether it's a contract, whether it walks like a duck and talks like a duck. But I think there's legal precedent. And I think I just heard earlier today that this, this board unit, unit. Unilaterally changed in, in a whole bunch of policies. And to think that they can't change the compensation policy one year over to the next, I think might be taking. Well, it, it, it's a interpretation that I don't think is necessarily. The only interpretation that you, you could have.
Okay, thank you. Just a minor correction. It's, it's default calculation as opposed to a budget.
All right. Thanks, Amy. And now we'll go over to John and then Stephanie.
Thanks, Tim. Try to make this as brief as I can. I just wanted to respond to each of the. Finance committees' points. First, this is just echo. I'm glad to hear that there's a better process with respect to board participation. That's, I think that's really essential to getting to some level of understanding, even if there's disagreement. You know, proposed versus default budget and being so miniscule. I think that that's a function of some choices and some forcing that we're, we're faced with. The New Hampshire retirement quandary is a function of that. The investment that we've made in our staffing with all the step increases puts a default budget calculation that. You know, is a, is a substantial increase over the previous year. So I think there's. I mean, I'm, I'm only speaking for myself, but there's a, there's a real hesitancy to extend a proposed much beyond that. And what we find is there are this pickle that we're in with respect to other needs besides staffing and meeting legal obligations. Facilities is a perfect example of that. Which. Is, makes this job very difficult. I, I think that. Your question or your, your bullet point about the master schedule. Being available. being available in the budget season as opposed to after the budget, budget season, season is astute and probably necessary at this point to combat these challenges and these choices that we face. I think that connecting to the strategic direction of the school is probably the most important thing that you've said. If that gives a, a reason to ask for more money or, or a proposed budget to achieve some goal. And as I recall, in the default budget calculation spreadsheet, there's a a column about why it's in the default budget, whether it's a legal obligation or a contractual obligation or some other statutory requirement. There, there could be, and I recommend there should be a similar column in a proposed budget or even in the default, why certain funds are important for the strategic vision to help us see and explain to others why certain proposals are being made at the expense of other proposals. I think if you do that, you'll find the metrics that you seek. And then with respect to a multi-year budget, I think that's a good idea. I don't know how practical it is, like with, with high fidelity, but we already have been doing a lot of that with respect to capital improvement plan over the next several decades. We're doing that with facilities. It's, it's harder with, with curriculum and, and staffing, because you don't, you know, you don't really know who's retiring. You don't know what the enrollment is going to be that far out, but I think it's a laudable goal. And then finally, it's totally understandable that you don't have final recommendations yet, because those are going to be a function of what we as a board finally adopt. So our continued communication throughout the next several weeks is going to be actually really critical so that we can put forward a budget that's as considered as possible. When we finally adopt it, it becomes a board budget as opposed to an administrative proposal. Thanks.
Thanks, John, Stephanie, and I just want first before Stephanie goes, we have about 10 minutes left on this topic, and we still need to talk about how we're going to, how we'd like to look at the JFAK items and how we want to potentially finance those. So go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah. Um, so I know we're not talking details of the budget tonight, so that's saved for the budget workshop meeting next week, I think it is. But yeah, I think it's important for everyone to understand the, where the strategic vision is and what's, you know, so it helps understand the master schedule, the staffing requirements that all build off of that. One thing I asked Mike to look into at one of those SAFC meetings is just our connection with Schnu and understanding how that helps drive our strategic vision and things. So I think he'll, he's working on that and hopefully at our budget workshop, maybe he can come prepared to answer those questions, giving him time. So that's just, I just want to say with the, working with the SAFC, I said, they have been into the weeds and the detail, and they're still asking questions. And I think Michelle even opened up the budget questionnaire so they can insert more questions. So definitely take some time and go back and look. This is all the school board members to make sure that you see what other questions they're going to be adding. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, Steve, did you have a hand back up again?
I did.
Okay.
So just, I was going to give a long speech, but since you put time constraint, I'll make it a short speech. The, in response to Joel's suggestion about the, the salary policy, the compensation policy, you're absolutely right. The board has the, the right and the authority to make unilateral changes to it and, and can do so at any time. The, the issue is if the board does that and breaks faith with the PPC process that's been in place for 25 years, about 17 milliseconds after that vote, we will have a unionized building. And I don't think any of us want a united building on either side. The staff will feel forced into it. They will do it. And frankly, I would agree that they felt forced into it, and I would, I would say that they, they acted appropriately if the board broke faith with them. So, um, and a unilateral move by the board to change compensation is perfectly legal, perfectly possible, perfectly wrong.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. So some good things to get needed to think about and our budget workshop on the seventh, I believe, we'll have an opportunity to hopefully dive a little deeper into some of those. Let's talk quickly on in our remaining five minutes of the items that the JFAK brought forward. And let me pull up at least where I can read it. So just to reiterate the recommendation, it was for the main entrance, $250,000. Just that was the, um, I can't remember the color, but whatever. The color was the, the lowest option of just securing the main entrance with the little bit of the admin area. Then the locker rooms for $75,000, science labs in the annex for 425,000. That was just for one lab renovation. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions about how we want to potentially address these expenses? I see Stephanie's hand up, so I'll start with her.
Sure. Um, so a couple of things, partly I was, I was on the S, on the Sohegan 2.0 committee that worked with Victoria and Lisa Eastland and Genie Loop. And some of the things we were talking about just funding wise, we need to think about them in different categories. So when we talk about science labs, we're really talking about curriculum and how it affects our curriculum. So those things might want to be considered as a budget item or at least planned in some fashion of that, since it is a curriculum sort of issue. Lockers, lockers are almost a maintenance sort of issue and probably should have been addressed years ago. So it depends on how much money you want to put towards those. So again, that should maybe go into the maintenance or come out of a capital maintenance fund potentially. And then the main entrance, that is a separate project, and we'll have to decide how much we want to spend on that. But I'm in line with what Victoria presented as what to, what to renovate at the main entrance. But that really probably should be a separate warrant article to give people a chance to say yay or nay on that extra expense. But those are my, I think.
That's good. I, I actually appreciate that, Stephanie. I think that's one, one of the right, good ways to think about it. Not saying the only way, but it's a good way to, to think about those separate projects that way. Laura has her hand up.
My question was, is do we have to take the choices of the JFAKs or can we upgrade certain things and downgrade other items?
Yeah, we can do whatever we want, whatever we decide as a board.
Okay. And how exactly are you going to renovate one of the science rooms when they're proposing to take four rooms into three?
Was Lance or Victoria on this? I don't think they're on the meeting anymore. There is, there is a way that you can do it. Lance, we asked that question because we're, we're worried about the funding amount, knowing that Amherst School Board is coming forward with a fairly large bond and trying to fit into the idea of potentially a flat sort of taxing, what can we build in to a budget versus capital maintenance or, or a capital account for like a warrant article? We're concerned about asking for a mil, over a million dollars when we need to really evaluate all of the science labs. And that's something Mike is doing this year. That includes the ones that are in the building. So we're saying if you really want to go forward with the science labs first off, which we know we need to do something to science labs. They are not big enough. They are not in the shape that they should be to enhance our curriculum. The problem is if you move too fast and you don't have your, your, again, your, your entire strategic vision worked out, where Mike can explain it all to us. You don't know if you're supporting the right things. So it's careful, can you do something one at a time? Or do you do it, do you wait and do it all at once? So that is something we need to decide how we want to do that. Hopefully that makes sense.
Okay. And Bales have a comment? Otherwise, I think, yes, Laura.
Won't we have money at the end of the year?
So, yeah, that's a great question. Um, and is Michelle still on? Oh, there you are, right in the upper corner of my screen. Do we at this point have a projected unreserved fund balance?
I do not have a projected unreserved fund balance at this point, but we, we'll be working on putting that together. And some of that has been impacted by some of the grant funding that we have received for COVID-related costs. So initially, at the beginning of the year, it certainly seemed as though it was going to be much tighter than now with some of that funding that has come through. So I'll be working on putting that together.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I understand what, what you're asking, Laura. I, I'd like to kind of put this back on Adam, Michelle and the administration just to see if there are ways, as Stephanie suggested, to perhaps, so if we look at the, the main entrance, I'm not saying we're, we're going to do this or anything, but is that $250,000 expense being put on as a warrant article and then the locker rooms, some kind of, you know, I think we have that maintenance fund, perhaps, you know, is that the best way to perhaps look at that? And then also with the science labs, is there a way that we can, you know, put it into, into the budgets somehow? Again, I, I don't want answers right now, uh, because I think a lot of thought has to go, get put into that. But I would like to obviously have answers as soon as possible, um, so we can go into our budget workshop and really solidify the direction that we want to go in. But I'd like to understand what those options are and what, what the best way per your suggestions, you know, as ones that are continually around the budget and those funds and understand the impacts of one versus another, one method versus another. Is that something that you guys can take care of?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide my recommendation on that now, Tim, because we've had some conversation and thought through that. So if you, if you, you mentioned you don't want to hear the answer now. If you really don't, that's fine, but happy to provide it now if you'd like.
So if you already have some, then I'm, I'm happy to hear it. Sorry. I thought this is going to take a lot more.
No, so I, I, I think all of the expenses, uh, except for the science labs are, are likely permissible from the contingency, from the capital reserve fund. So the board could choose to do the main entrance and the locker rooms and pull money from that capital reserve fund. Those are likely qualifying expenses. The science labs could not be, uh, those would, uh, don't qualify, I don't think, for the, the purpose of maintenance in the capital reserve fund that was established. However, my recommendation would be that for both the science labs, that, that, I'll go one at a time. For the science labs, your options, in my opinion, are to either place them on the ballot as a separate warrant article or in the budget. The board can do either. Either is permissible, either is allowable. The advantage of a separate warrant article is that if people, if, if voters have a concern about the science labs, they'll have no choice but to vote no on the budget, to say no on the science labs, and that could affect the budget being passed. So the advantage of it being separate is that the voters have separate and, and distinct ability to approve the, the science lab expenditure without having a, an impact on the budget on the ballot. And so that would be my recommendation, uh, but you could do either. And as Stephanie mentioned, having it be in the budget because it's curricular, I really like the sound of that. Because if, if that means we say curricular related items go in the budget because we prioritize those things, um, I would certainly support that as well. But those are your two options there, and, and either are permissible. With regard to the security upgrades, again, uh, the board could likely move to withdraw funds from that, from the capital reserve fund tomorrow or today, and we could move forward on that project. I would recommend that also be on the ballot as a separate warrant article. And it could potentially be noted to say that the funding could come from the unassigned fund balance this year, if available, meaning for those upgrades, it could be noted that, uh, they will only be done if there's enough of the unassigned fund balance from this current year available to do that project. I don't think it's a good idea to use the unassigned fund balance for the security upgrades without getting voter approval first. And the reason for that is our current year's budget did not include anything in the, uh, in that part of the budget that would allow a transfer to those funds. And I think it's a better move to put it on the ballot for voter approval, even if you fund it from the, the same exact place, from the unassigned fund balance. And then lockers, because lockers and replacing of lockers really can be seen as a maintenance for an existing item, and it's a relatively low dollar amount. Um, I think that is something that we could do at the end of the year with unassigned fund balance, if available, without voter approval. We could certainly ask for voter approval separately and do it that way. But I think that that's the sort of thing that most typical taxpayers assume if something is broken, like the lockers are clearly broken, that fixing them is not something that requires a specific approval. Um, and so my opinion would be that we wait till the unassigned, wait to see how the unassigned fund balance shapes up. And if funds are available in May, that the board will authorize those lockers to move forward. So to summarize, the decision points for the board are with regard to the science lab upgrades. And again, my opinion, either place on the ballot separately as a special warrant article or include in the, in the proposed budget for the security upgrades, um, to have those either as a separate warrant article or include in the budget, but if a separate warrant article potentially fund through the unassigned fund balance, if available. And for lockers, um, again, to either include as a separate warrant article or to simply fund through the unassigned fund balance at the end of this year.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate. Yes, very helpful. I appreciate that. So, okay. I still see a couple of hands and we need to move on here. So, uh, John and then Steve and then, oh, and then Amy. And then, and that's it. Okay, John?
All right. I appreciate the, I'll just take them one by one. I think Stephanie laid out the, the program quite well to echo others. Labs as curriculum makes sense. The idea of budget versus warrant. I think it in this case, I would, I mean, this is just an initial thought, but for, for, for everyone else to consider. But we did warrants at the Amherst School Board on a bunch of things, and none of them passed. And no means no in New Hampshire. So that means the district couldn't spend $0 on any of that for future. And because here we are looking at a proposed, the delta between our proposed budget and our default budget calculation is so low that if you're going to make a, a distinction between the default and the proposed, that might be the place to do it. And if the answer was no, you're left with a default that is manageable. And if your answer is yes, then you have clear path to do it. And if your answer is no, you can at least make some progress towards it to the extent you have some funds available at some level at some point. It doesn't completely stop you in your tracks. So I, I'm feeling like that's maybe not a warrant in this case for this year. Locker maintenance, unassigned fund, I mean, I, I appreciate the idea of putting unassigned funds to future or projects that need to be, things get broken, but I, I really have a lot of caution that tax, if, if you don't spend all the money that taxpayers granted you, then your first obligation is to give it back to the taxpayer. And if you have a reason and a justification and you have a communication plan, then it's probably okay to shepherd out some of that funds and make your case and, and go for it. But I just say proceed with caution for unassigned funds and spending them as if they're a blank check. And then with respect to the entrance, it's a question. To a statement and a question, the first, the statement is spending the capital expended, uh, capital reserve funds that we've built up so far, those funds are spoken for, those funds are not for, uh, other projects. Those funds are part of a long-term strategy to replace roofs and boilers to the tune of $600,000 or $300,000 a year for a long time. And if we And if we rob that fund now to do some project like this, we're gonna do exactly what happened to the New Hampshire retirement system back in the 80s. But we're gonna find ourselves totally screwed in the future by caution against that. My question is, I recall back a few years ago, there was quite a bit of grant money for security upgrades at schools. So the question is, is there grant money available for a security upgrade like the entrance? Or even like what, like what Steve was positing about better securing the transition between the main building and the annex?
I know you're asking that question too, John?
Well, I guess that would be Michelle, the administration, Michelle and Christine and Meg and Adam, with respect to grant funds. I mean, they're, they're those, they're the tip of the spear with respect to that. So are there programs out there still available to have help with security upgrades? And I don't know the answer.
The answer is, I'm not sure either. They, they tend to be cyclical, meaning they come around in, in waves, and I'm not sure if there's any right now. But if, if there was, it would probably not make a dent in a major security upgrade. It might be a helpful, but it wouldn't be in the, in other words, maybe 10 to 20 to $50,000 might be available, but nothing in to the order of magnitude, like securing an entrance between two buildings. In my opinion.
Right, well, I guess it becomes part of the communication plan, right? If you, if you make that good effort and find some funds, then maybe the rest of us can chip in the rest of the dollars to get it done. But it sure is a better persuasive case to, to have gone down those paths in the first instance.
Yep, so luckily, that one of the things that J-FAC is doing is they have a very big communication plan that they're moving forward with, and if these are one of the, some of the things that they have discussed. So this would be one of the items that they will talk to during their public meetings. I don't want to, if I'm speaking out of turn, Amy, please correct me, but if I'm not, then, okay, thank you. All right, we really need to move on. If you guys have something quick, I'd see Steve, Amy, Laura, Stephanie, it has to be quick, because we're getting behind at this point. Go ahead, Steve.
So me, okay, yeah, so I'll be quick. First of all, I agree with John said about robbing the expendable trust fund for things we, that weren't, aren't in the plan, because it's funded to the plan, so good for John for saying that. And this is stupid to say it in this order, but Adam, I want to correct you. The expendable trust for maintenance was an invention of the Amherst School Board, and it was for maintenance only. I stole it for South Hegan and got it on the warrant and got it passed. But I amended it so that for South Hegan is maintenance and capital improvements. So that fund could be used for that, even though I just said, I don't want to use it for that.
Is it also an expendable trust or is it a capital reserve fund?
It is an expendable trust with a, there's a policy which Michelle has found already about, there's a separate advisory committee that has to be convened to recommend it to the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Amy?
Okay, so I just want to dig a little deeper on that fund. So my understanding is that there is currently about $250,000 in there, is that correct, Michelle?
It's actually more than that at this point, because the $100,000 has been recorded in there, the contribution from the prior, for this year.
Okay, so I also believe that the projects that are, that are slated to be completed, when we determined what we needed to, to deposit into the fund, we were not accounting for that original $250,000. So when we were scheduling out our deposits, we were not planning on touching that original 250K, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so in essence, we have $250,000 that is there ideally for emergencies. Is that also correct?
I believe it is, but I want to confirm that.
Okay, however, those funds are available. So I think we should keep that in mind for, especially for the lockers as potential funding source. I agree, I have, I have a really hard time thinking about spending funds that may be left over at the end of the year that ideally should be returned to the taxpayer. So that's just my, my take on that. I, I don't, I think it's a dangerous position for the board to be in, to be creating budgets and then having surplus over and, and potentially spending that. I think it, I'll just leave it at that. That's, that's a difficult decision for me to make. I think that it should be done with great care. And if there are funds left over, then we should be deliberating extensively to make a decision to use those funds that were originally slated for other, other items. But I would like to consider that, those funds for, potentially for the lockers, because they're not part of the plan that Roger is going to be implementing for capital improvements.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Laura, quickly, and then Stephanie, and then we'll have to move on, please.
I wanted a little clarification, so the $150,000 for the entryway security.
$250,000.
I thought it was.
That's the recommendation.
Okay. And that cannot be spent at the, at the end of the year? From the fund balance? Is that what Adam said?
No, no, actually, he said, I wonder if I can paraphrase, that we can put in language saying that if it's available at the, in the unexpendited fund balance, that we could pay for it that way. But as you just heard, there's arguments about not using that money for that reason, so.
Right, but which of the items did not have anything in that budget category for last year's or this year's budget?
Science labs.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, sorry.
All right.
Yep. All right, Stephanie? Last, Laura?
Yeah, so yeah, I think that the idea of the lockers potentially coming out of that capital fund is not a bad idea, especially since if there's the $250,000 sitting around for that, I think that's a pretty good use of that. Going back to the science labs, you know, they were recommending $425,000, just doing one of the labs. And a lot of the reason we were talking about that was, you know, we're, we're really concerned about raising the budget too much. I mean, that we're already asking for a pretty decent increase this year. And if we keep adding on and adding on and adding on, the voters are just gonna say no. So we need to understand, we need to have a hard discussion of, do you do one lab at a time? And that is not cost-effective, flat out, it is not cost-effective. But how do you address this with ever-increasing budgets? We need to have a hard conversation on this. And I don't want to be held to a timeline, just because we have it on the, on our agenda that we have set an amount of time to talk to this. I really think we need to make sure we have deep discussions and do it properly.
Yeah, I agree, but I don't think that, you know, tonight is the right night for that. We need, we need to talk about it. I think people need to think a little bit more about it now that we've seen, everyone's seen the presentation from J-FAC. And we've got some, some good recommendations from a variety of, of potential sources. So my recommendation is that we table it for now. And then when we have our workshop in a week and a half, come back to it. And not even a week and a half, whatever, a week. Then come back to it, and as far as I'm concerned, we should have a direction that we decide on at that point. Okay, everybody cool with that? Great, so almost eight o'clock, so we're gonna have to skip the graduation plan discussion. I'm just kidding, but if there is something, if we can talk about it, you know, quickly, and that'd be great. So I'm not sure who the presenter of that is, Adam?
Mike Berry, I'd like Principal Berry to speak to that, if you could.
Great, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, so this was a question that was kind of raised to me and, you know, throughout the summer and into the fall. And, you know, as it was presented, it was presented as this, you know, to provide an update on the graduation planning process, the possibility of moving it to earlier in the high school career and with a focus on closing the gaps caused by the COVID-19 process or, or issues. And so what I did is I talked to the Counseling Director Karen Chennessen, I talked to the other administration and kind of learned about what we did, you know, what South Hegan has done in the past. And so maybe I can just talk briefly to kind of what currently exists. And then if there's any questions, I can, and I can field any kind of questions from it. And I can then maybe talk about like what the plan is to kind of move, move it forward. I just want to clarify a question from the board. Are we separating out the, the graduation, you know, planning process compared to the personalized pathways process? Or does that mean the same thing to, to the board? So that will help me if I could get some clarification on, on that, as I kind of speak to you a little bit about it.
Wrong button, does anybody have any?
Mike, could you restate that? I'm sorry, I don't think I quite understood.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think when, when I hear you guys talk about graduation planning and then personalized pathways to graduation, I think sometimes we're talking about the same thing. And I just want clarification from the board for tonight. You want me to talk a little bit more about the, the graduation planning or the personalized pathway planning? Because they're two different things, in, in my opinion. And, and I think after talking to people at, at the school, it's two different things. So I just want to make sure we're narrowing the focus of our conversation, if not talking to, to both pieces if we have to.
So Mike, this was originally my request to have you take a look at this. So, you know, I, first of all, thank you for, for taking this on during everything else that you have going on. But yeah, maybe, you know, in my view, it was, I probably did meld them together. So I would appreciate you breaking them apart for me in your conversation. But yeah, I was, I was looking at how can we help our students make the best decisions possible earlier in their high school career to get them to whatever goals they're trying to meet for upon graduation? So, you know, are there ELO opportunities that students can be exposed to early, earlier on? Are there more career-type options that students can be exposed to early on? And then course choosing, you know, how are we, how are we advising all of our students early on in the process? And I know they do a grad plan, but I've always thought that perhaps maybe those could be more rigorous in terms of getting students to think about what they would like to accomplish within their high school career, and how does that set them up for the best success after high school? So there's, those are probably more broad topics.
Yeah.
You're the expert, so I, I'm all ears.
All right, so, so what I can tell you is, South Hegan, you know, high school starts the, the college planning process in ninth grade. And, and it's also the time they start the kind of the career pathway process. So I'm going to talk a, a little bit about the overall, overall process and then kind of, kind of get into, you can ask questions at any point, but, you know, it, it starts in ninth grade, and we use this system called NAVIANS. And, you know, in the ninth grade, it's in, through the counseling office, a little bit through advisory, possibly meetings with counselors where they do some career interest exploration and social studies classes. They develop a four-year plan, very, you know, kind of a broad four-year plan, but based on kind of interest of where they're at and kind of their goals on how they want to use South Hegan. They meet with the counselors throughout the year, but they're get introduced to this NAVIANS thing where they can start to kind of look at, you know, you know, pathways to graduation. They can look at post-secondary stuff, they can look at careers, they can do their own research, they can look at scholarships that are available, they can look at potential like apprenticeships and gap year type experiences using that, that program. And then that kind of process evolves through like 10th grade, where they are exposed to CTE program and, and presentations from the sending centers, they have career days, they do more course selection stuff with the counselors, there is some social studies classes, and then that evolves into kind of 11th and 12th grade. And Amy, I'm kind of going a little bit quickly through this, but there is a process that kind of, that the counselors have used.
I will say. No, I'm, I'm well aware of it, I had three kids graduate high, high school, so I know what you're talking about.
I think what, what, as I look into it, and, and, you know, being, you know, in this first year, working through these things, I think there's some, you know, a bit, maybe more, some more intentionality. And, and there's more, a little bit more of a system, you know, using the, the student service office and the counseling office in coordination with classes and teams and, and advisory to, to maybe make this experience a little more intentional, a little more connected. And I think, you know, there, there, there has been some preliminary conversations with us on how we would want to do that. And, and I get the feeling from both conversations internally at South Hegan and the board that people want this to happen. We just need to kind of like facilitate this and make it a bit more intentional. Because at the end of the day, a public high school should be exposing kids to the multiple pathways to graduation and the multiple careers and, you know, industries and, and post-secondary experiences that you can't. Then it's up to the student to access those opportunities that they're exposed to and work with their families to partner with the school. Because, you know, even though we're predominantly like a two and a four-year school, you know, type of high school where we're, we're pushing kids, that more and more opportunities are making themselves available, and we're obligated to do that. And I think how we use time at the high school is something you're going to be seeing us kind of, kind of look into. And the intentionality behind that, because I, I'm, I'm hearing some, some trends through the conversations that we're having. And, and I think you, you'll see that a little bit. There was a law passed SB 276 by the board, the state, in, in, in the spring of 2019, where it, it requires you to, you know, have a process where you're exposing kids. The other piece that I think is a little bit missing, and it's going to be maybe a bit larger hurdle to climb, is you're, you're working with two different school districts, and the alignment, a lot of these processes start in the sixth or seventh grade in school districts. And I think, and, and with us, with something that we're gonna have to kind of partner with, you know, AMS and, and, and maybe start that kind of career exploration and, and interest exploration a little bit earlier. As far as ELOs go, you know, I think if people know me, I, I, I definitely think my experience in, in, in public education deals like, it is, is personalized. In a perfect world, you have a kid in welding that is in AP physics. And if you can create a school that has those opportunities and a master schedule that supports that, that's what you're gonna want to do. And ELOs play right into that, you know, and, and Amherst is in a community where they have access to lots of ELO opportunities. And in fact, you know, I, I am a co-invisor with Kim Amutsen, who is the ELO coordinator right now. And we've had some candid conversations throughout the spring and the summer, how, how South Hegan does lack a little bit in, in, in the formality of the ELO process. And, and that is something that we're gonna have to work on, and I have some strong feelings and thoughts on that. But I can tell you, it's, there's things in place, there's a little more intentionality that we can get, you know, put into place in how we use the time and how we coordinate it is throughout the school. But that's kind of where we're at with the graduation planning. And I think it's, that also kind of dovetails, like to get kids to, to plan for the life after high school, you have to help them, you know, be exposed to things that early on in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, so they can appropriately use all the opportunities at South Hegan. And that's something that has to, has to be a little more formalized and with a little more intention. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. And I don't want to kind of go into the details about everything they do in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade already, because, you know, there seems to be a bit of a gap.
Thanks, Mike, I see John has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Mike, I appreciate what you said, I was taking some notes, and I had some exclamation points, but you kind of addressed them. I think one thing that you said that was really important was, you know, begins in, it doesn't begin in the ninth grade. You know, begins in, it doesn't begin in the ninth grade, right? And this is a huge point we're talking about right now, right? This notion of what is, what is your path? Not that your path is to be in cement in the eighth grade, but a path should be. Should be laid out or, or multiple paths and choose your own adventure kind of a thing. And what's going to be most important in that is two things in my view. One is. There's a, it seems like there's a presumption that when we're talking about student goals. That we don't actually ask the first question, which is what are, what is the student goal? If you're looking at an individualized path towards graduation, the first question to ask is what is your goal? To the student or to the family? And then depending on that answer, that's when you can have a, a real dialogue between a, an educational professional and the student. To make sure that that's a reasonable path, that that's an ambitious enough path, that that's a path that leads to some future. And, and work with the student along those lines. So the first question it seems to me would be to set the goal. And then the second would be. The follow-up along the pathway, maybe there's some gaps when you said there's some gaps, you know, in nine, 10, 11 and 12 is who's going to follow up and when and how frequently on what's the progress to the goal? What are the interim goals? You know, where's the, where are the selections? And I, and I don't know the mechanism exactly where, where that. Gets put into play, if it's in advisory or if it's with just a mentor teacher, or if it's in counseling or, or maybe a mixture of both or all of the above. But. That could really help not only. Put a path towards graduation, which is the minimum sort of requirement, but also the path towards life, which I really appreciated talking about. That this is a path towards life and helping guide a student through, through an initial. Establishment of path like, hey, this is really important. And even if, and when it, and when it may be changes for some students and probably often will. Then there's a mechanism by which you can capture the changes and you can make a redirection. In real time and there's no lag. So I appreciate your process. I, I'd like to maybe talk more deeply about it with you and others who are interested. But I think this is a real critical piece for. For enabling an individualized learning path for high school students in, in our schools. Is to have that kind of goal setting and follow-up and, and. That those two things alone will help. Smooth out this process and enable more kids to reach a level of success that we're not currently seeing. I appreciate your efforts and I look forward to the future conversations with you.
All right. As I've said on other topics, we need to get things moving along here, but I see Amy and then. Stephanie's hands. So Amy, Evan, another question?
Yep, I'll be quick. And John, I, I agree with what you said. Just quickly, Mike, one thing that I would ask that you make sure you consider is because students. During COVID have perhaps not had the opportunity to take certain classes. I want to make sure that there's a lot of attention paid to. Having students map their courses out over the next few years because there could be some gaps. So I think we, we definitely need to pay close attention to that. And then also something that intrigued me when we interviewed you for the principal position was the work that you had done in your school. With your student services department in personalizing college applications. And I was very intrigued by that and really excited about it. So I'd love to hear more about that if you plan on moving that forward, which I would hope that you do. Not tonight, you don't have to talk.
I hear you and I, I think, you know, here's the thing that I'm learning about Salhegan. There's a lot of things that, good things that happened at Salhegan High School that are not interconnected. That could be more, made more powerful and meaningful for the student experience if they were more connected between ninth and 10th grade and 10th and 11th grade. And what the students, you know, the counseling office is doing in coordination with the advisory, with the, in, in coordination with seminars, they get into 12th. And that, that just takes a little bit of facilitation. And I think that's what you guys are, you know, and that's what people want and, and that's what we're going to be kind of working towards. And then, you know, Amy, there was a little bit, I don't want to say this, you know, there was a lot of autonomy that we had to make some decisions within that student services department to, to kind of produce a good product so that we knew that the kids needed. And, and so we were able to move quickly and, and that's how you have, that's how you kind of can, can meet some of these expectations and. And then we prioritized it and that was the other thing, we, we kind of prioritized a couple of things and we kept those as our priorities over the course of, you know, one, two and three years. So instead of working on five, six, seven different things, we worked on, you know, two, three, four things over the, the support course of that time. And that allowed us to move quick. And so that's something that we're still learning to figure out. This is certainly one of those things that you're going to see. And I think people are on board with this and, and I, I were very aware of the gaps, not just like the planning gaps, but also the gaps that, you know, the kids are not maybe getting the experiences that, that they necessarily wanted for ninth and 10th grade. And we're very aware of that and as we're planning for their experiences, 10th, 11th and 12th, we're keeping those in mind. So, and anytime you guys have questions, if you, you know, go through Adam to email me, I have no problem answering them and keeping you updated like in between meetings.
Can you mute it? Thank you. And I said, thanks first and then went on to say Stephanie and Laura. So go ahead, Stephanie, quickly, Laura, quickly, after that, we need to move on. So go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm just going to say thank you to, to everyone who said things ahead of time about goal-setting opportunities, follow-through, things like that, the opportunities. One thing, Mike, I definitely would like to see now that I have a couple of kids, one's finishing the high school, one's, you know, fairly new into it. When you are putting together this whole package idea of, you know, whether it's goal-setting, how to discover ELOs, all the opportunities that could be available to students. And of course, one of the big things, mapping out the courses, because sometimes you don't realize until it's too late when you're looking at applying to colleges the next year, that you needed three lab classes and you've only had one or you've only had two and now you need the third. So it would be great to have a, a package put together that's a presentation to parents as well. Because the parents are just as important in this goal-setting process, especially when you're talking about ninth graders who are, you know, 14 years old. They don't know what they want to do. They most of them do not know what they want to do. We need to get the parents involved because they can help to have that conversation at home. And then over the time, do the, you know, put together the whole exact goals and follow-through. But yeah, I would love to see an incoming ninth grade parent presentation on here's all the opportunities that existed at Salhegan. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be overwhelming, but it starts the communication process.
Yeah, you know, and I, I was going to comment on, on, on two things as, as people were talking. One. There's a, there's kind of like a missing thing in, in a lot of high schools. Salhegan is kind of one of them, talking and, and, and advertising and communicating all the good things that do happen. You know, the counseling office does meet regularly with their students and they, they work closely with their students. And I think, you know, doing a kind of a systematic process to make sure that the families are aware, especially when they're 14, 15-year-olds, what's, you know, taking place at the school. That's something that we can do better at, you know, the counselors are doing what they're doing. The administration can do a better job of, you know, communicating that process to families. And when you talk about not having an eighth grade meeting, like as they transitioned into high school and then not having meetings during the year, that is just something that. A lot of schools do and, you know, I would assume that's part of the process. And, you know, because, you know, you get to high school, you need to figure out how to navigate and use all the resources as a eighth grader coming in. And it's supposed to be a partnership between the families, so the 14-year-old can be guided by their families to help them use it. And we, you know, as a public high school, you need it to work out for, for many kids, as many as possible, not just the certain kids on a certain path. And, and that's why the families are a partnership to it. So there's some things in coordination can be done, but I can tell you, there's a lot of things, good things happening that people don't know about and a lot of things that are happening, they're not interconnected and we're not that far off, to be honest with you. And so we'll get there, right?
Yeah. Hey, Mike, could you throw some of those things as you, as you're starting to package that stuff up and solidify? Could you throw those in your principal reports about here are some of the things we've accomplished? I think that would be great for us to read and understand those things that you're achieving.
Well, I'm really not achieving much.
It will come.
I'm aware of a lot of things, Stephanie, and I will put that in the board report. All right, no problem.
Sorry, and Laura?
No, that was great. Thank you for sharing and it's a great process. I'd like to see some of the items repeated since we're dealing with teenagers and at different times to have more. Interact question and answer type. Group events with parents and the guidance department. I know those have always been very helpful over the years. And as you go through the process, different questions come up.
Okay.
And 80% of our students currently go to college. I know this is different than the school you came from. I, I would say 90% if you include the two, two-year college curriculum. So I think helping prepare our kids for what 80% of them are doing is not. Catering to specific children. But anyway, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. So. Let's move on where again, we'll fall a little bit further behind. We have the PSAT SAT AP score report by Assistant Superintendent Christine Manderwall.
I'll tee that off quickly, Mr. Chairman. I just want to underscore two things. First, we typically are, started a process of addressing our test scores once a year at a major SAU meeting where we dive in deeply. But we're including these things on a regular basis at the board's request. But second, it, it really needs to be highlighted how impressive these scores are and the highest that we've seen in recent memory in both math and reading. And so this is a, a reflection of the great work being done at Salhegan High School and it, it, it needs to be underscored. So Christine.
Yeah, thank you. As Adam said, really exciting results, especially considering our disruption last year. What's helpful with this report is that you can see the PSAT results from the current seniors. From last year in the fall and we pay for all of our juniors to be able to take the PSAT so that we have full cohort data. So the PSAT results are there along with that same cohort of students and, and how they did on SAT. And you can see the growth from PSAT to SAT, which I think is a really helpful piece of data to see that. I do also report out on the grade 11 benchmark. I want to remind you that while the SAT is our state assessment, students are taking that in 11th grade. But the benchmark that students need to meet is actually a college and career-ready benchmark. So for example, in English Language Arts, we have. 90% of our students meeting the college and career-ready benchmark. Now, they did take it in the fall of their senior year instead. It's typically in the spring of their junior year, but they're showing college and career readiness. 90% of our students in English Language Arts went really at the start of their senior year, which is really exciting. And looking back at that grade 11 benchmark, 95% of students are meeting that grade 11 benchmark, which is really strong. And, you know, equally so for math. We've really kept an eye on our math scores over the past few years and you can see there are fluctuations from year to year. Remember that chart, the, the chart that you see, the bar chart. Keep in mind that those are different cohorts of students, so you're always going to see some fluctuations there. But this is the highest, you know, we go from. 2015, which is the smarter balanced assessment, so students didn't have as much stake in that assessment. Where only 45% of our students were proficient to 68% of our students in math showing. That in the beginning of their senior year that they can meet that college and career-ready benchmark, which is really exciting. And I also want to remind you that in math, the benchmark is higher than it is in English Language Arts. So in math, that college and career-ready benchmark, students need to achieve a 530. Where in English Language Arts, they only need to achieve a 480 to meet that college and career-ready benchmark. So that's an important piece to note as well. So we were really excited with these results that, you know, both students and teachers continue to work deeply through our, our remote learning last year. And students were able to come back and pretty quickly take the SAT and perform this well. So we're really proud of our results and really excited at how well they did. So happy to answer any questions. There is also AP data included in there. I'm happy to answer questions you might have.
Anybody have questions up? I see Stephanie. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I do. So Christine, thank you. Out of curiosity, this class that took the SAT test that scored so high. And I, you probably don't know this off the top of your head, but how do they typically test when we look back at their NEWA data? Did they always test high? Or have they always been like, are they just a high achieving class? Or is this going to be, is this something we're going to see a trend in that maybe our program's been changed? And this really is indicative of improvement.
Yeah, so that's a great question and I wanted to dig in to just a few years ago. NWEA did a link to SAT, but they don't allow me to go back and run that report. So I was really frustrated. I don't typically run data reports and save them. We always have access to NWEA. So I was not able to run a report. I was able to run it for, not for SAT, but for ACT and expected proficiency on ACT. So I was a little worried about running it for ACT and comparing to SAT. So unfortunately I wasn't able to do that. So I was a little frustrated that that, I even reached out to NWEA support and said, hey, am I missing something? Why can't I run this report? So now I know to run that report just to have it on hand, that's the one report that they only track back two years, which is really frustrating that I wasn't able to pull that data. So that's a, a good question. I can actually even go back to, to eighth grade data. I hadn't thought to look back that far, but I'm happy to dig into that question more deeply. In my mind, they don't necessarily hand out. You know, I know that there are typical fluctuations and I know Karen Chenness is probably on as an attendee. She's, she can certainly Slack me if she wants to share, but we can also pull her over to answer the question. She might have a greater sense of, you know, academically, how these students typically are performing, but I can also do a deeper dive into that as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because I want to say at the top of my head, this class is always tested well. Just because my kid, my daughter's in the class, so I, I want to say that there's something about this class, but I don't know the trend. So that was one curiosity. On the other one, I did have a question on that AP data. Do we have, I'm sure you have access to the data of actually looking at the number of students achieve a, achieve a three or higher on each of the tests. So like looking at, let's say chemistry versus AP calculus, AP calculus, AP US history. So we can see if there's any changes we need to make to our, our program, like our work, is there a certain percentage? We're not doing well in a certain class. I mean, this, this graph and information gave us, doesn't give us any of that info, because we should really be doing the best we possibly can for the students. And. Yeah, when you look at the number of exams and the number of kids that receive a three or higher, it's like, ooh.
Yeah, and you know, I wanted to provide, we've never actually shared out AP assessment results with the school board in the, the past. So this is the first time we're sharing, so I, I wanted to provide kind of an overview and a summary. But I'm happy to provide a deeper dive into, you know, the exact assessments. I did include in the memo that, you know, every teacher and our teachers worked really hard. Last year to prepare students in that disruptive, disrupted environment.
It was a terrible time.
Yeah, it was definitely challenging. So I was excited with our AP data as well. And again, it's an overview of data, but it is really helpful to see that. That the students were, weren't showing that they were impacted when you compare their results to previous years. And again, it's, we're not necessarily looking at different. And again, it's, we're not necessarily looking at different cohorts. When we look at previous years, we do have, you know, juniors and seniors mixed in with the, that AP data. So um, uh, you know, overall, I was very pleased with that. And you know, um, AP teachers worked really hard to make sure that they prepared students for the exam.
Oh, they did. They did. It was a bizarre year. I mean, when you go in, there's like an AP test and all you have are two questions on it. You have no idea if you're going to do well or not. It's just, it was a, so yeah, I'd be curious even like on prior years, because I look at this past year as who knows what was going to happen because it was such a strange test for, I think, all the classes. But yeah, it would be interesting to look at the history to say, are we, are we, do we need to make any changes to our AP class curriculum to make sure that we're addressing things to make sure every kid has a chance to pass? But that was my only question.
Yeah. And we do work with individual teachers who teach those courses and provide them with that individual course data. And they do often make those adjustments. We also budget every year to make sure that AP teachers have funds available to attend that AP institute, especially if their course is changing. We feel like we try to provide that deep level of support to help teachers with those AP courses, whether it's professional development or the data um, uh, on the AP exams. But I'm also happy to provide the, the individual test report information to the board as well.
Thank you.
All right. Um, if anybody has other items that have not been covered yet on this. First I have John, Laura, then Steve and Amy. I ask you kindly not to have to repeat anything that anybody's already said. So please go in that order. I'll remind you as we proceed. Thanks. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thanks, Pam. Um, no, no repeats, I think. What question? And then a couple of requests. What is benchmark? I see that the, that the comparison on the graphs is to the state. But I mean, is, is that the benchmark or, or is there some other benchmark?
No. Um, so this is a criterion referenced, um, results, meaning that it's, we're giving the percent of students that achieved, um, for example, in math of 530 or above. Because a 530 is considered college and career ready. So the benchmark is whatever that, that score is that shows for that grade 12 benchmark, for example, is a 530 for math. That means you're college and career ready, meaning that you're ready to tackle college level math courses. So we had 68% of our students meeting that benchmark of a 530 or above. Compared to the state, the state of New Hampshire only had 44% of their students, of the students from across the state, meeting that 530 benchmark.
Okay. So that's not a relative to the state. That's relative to a national standard or an international standard?
Yeah, college board sets those benchmarks.
Board. Okay, perfect. Um, I, I wonder, we can, I guess you can deduce from these bar charts. And by the way, don't, please don't take my, my comments as criticism of your work. It's so amazing. This, this is a great start. I just want to say that out loud. It, I guess you could deduce um, between, by, to compare the state to us as to how many are performing above, at or above benchmark. But it's hard to see, it's impossible to see where students are, what are below or maybe well below benchmark. And I wondered if, if there's a way to present this data in a, you know, like a, a normal graph where you can see the top 10%, the bottom 10%, the median, the, you know what I mean? The, and see like, and what that, what they could, it could look a little wavy, I suppose. And that might, especially as you begin to look at our math curriculum, as we've discussed in previous meetings, that that, that may be informative um, in terms of where you might want to strike as to, as to, um, you know, see where there may be problems in certain demographics in the student body. So that's a comment. But I, I love it. And I'll just say, just for the record, my last comment and I'll get off this topic. There are some sophomores who take AP exams. I have one last year who did. So just FYI, it's not just juniors and seniors. Anyway, thank you for your good work, Christine. I really appreciate this presentation.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you, Christine. I would like, is there a college board report sent to the high school that is public information that we might be able to see?
So all of the data was taken from our college board report. I'm happy to provide anything that I can. You know, there, it's, it's summary data. We certainly can share that report directly from college board with the board. I, I thought it was a little bit easier to digest if I pulled it together to be able to compare PSAT to SAT and so forth. But similar to how I had shared, you know, the, the data report printed exactly from NWEA, we certainly can share that directly with college board and share the summary results with the board if they'd like to see that.
I don't know if the board would like to see it, but I would be interested in reading through it.
It might be helpful for the, for just to, if it's something that you can send to the whole board, Christine, I think that'd be helpful. That anybody can look at it who wants to. Thank you. And uh, Amy.
Yeah, just quickly, um, this is incredible data. So I, I, I'm hoping that this is not being lost.
Yes, it is. Amy, it is incredible data.
Seriously.
Cut you off. It's incredible data and it's 1128 average. That's 1128 average on the SATs and that's 80% of your students taking APs. And the national average ranges from 45 to 55% in the APs. And so it's really incredible. And I'm listening to this and I'm like, man, if I'm an AP teacher and SAT, like I'm thinking like, I'm not doing a very good job. But we are doing a really good job. And I just need to, I'm glad you said that. I was waiting for this because it's, it's good work.
Yeah. I mean, this, exactly, Mike. I mean, these are the results that we have been waiting for. And we had in our stretch goals for our math, I think it was 70 to 80% and we're at 74. And, and I mean, the reading is what, 95? I mean, unbelievable. So I am, I am really excited about this as someone who's been tracking SAT scores for a really long time, as Christine knows. So um, I'm, you know, fingers crossed, this is a trend. And, you know, I know it's one year's worth of data, but I'm, this is moving in the right direction and it's, it's huge results. So um, I just couldn't let the night go by without expressing my, um, my excitement. So well done.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Great. Well, I'd like to echo those comments as well. Fantastic. And uh, like, like everybody said, let's keep our fingers crossed that it's a trend. All right. Thanks again. Um, we'll move on over to our next topic, which is uh, board to discuss applicants um, for a Mount Vernon Community Council rep. However, um, let me see real quick if Delaney is still with us or not. I think she may have.
Delaney had to, had to exit.
Yeah. I have, she wrote me a, a quick note. I can just read for her if that's okay.
That's fine. I was, I was hoping to segue between these two topics since they're both community council related.
Okay.
To back. So, but go ahead.
Yeah. So she said she was planning on letting the node, note, the board know that um, a proposal was passed. That has to do with passing time on the stairwells. Mike, you can probably talk about it better than I can. And it should hopefully be implemented by the end of the year. There's a few more proposals that are going to be vetted at, at executive either this week or next. And um, at the next school board meeting, Delaney is planning to have a, a written report out to board members so that it can be in the packets beforehand. This is something that we had talked about um, over the summer and having that be implemented so that board members can have that information prior to the meeting to review.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. Now we can move on to the Mount Vernon Community Council rep discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there is an open spot for the board's appointment to the Community Council from Mount Vernon. We've recently received an application and uh, that, I believe that was, that letter was provided to board members. And if there are no issues, then the board can take a motion to appoint that person to the Community Council to represent Mount Vernon.
Yeah. And uh, being a Mount Vernon resident, um, as George can attest to and Howard as well, since he's still in the audience, um, if you hold, hand, hold your hand up for something, you got it. So uh, we don't have a lot of people volunteering for this particular position. So uh, given that we have one, I say we, you know, jump on the opportunity and get that person into the community council. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second the motion.
Laura, motions seconded by John. And uh, that is just to clarify to have Heather. And I can't remember her new last name, new to me anyway. Heather Elaine, Elaine become the Mount Vernon representative to the community council. So we'll take a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
A yes. And I have to say thankfully, I'm so happy that Mount Vernon citizens are stepping up. We've seen a dearth at, at late with school board and this. And so I'm bravo, go Mount Vernon, please. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Jorge, yes.
Gronster, yes. So it's 7-0. Welcome Heather to the Community Council. All right. That brings us to public input number two. If we have any public still, but just on uh, list of participants. There's a few. I don't see any hands. So we'll move that forward to the next topic, which is a non-public. We have a non-public this evening. Mr. Superintendent?
We do under uh, A and C.
Okay. I'll take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Amy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John. A quick roll call. Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
Bay CS.
John?
Bubba, yes.
Stephanie?
Ron, yes.
Laura? All right, sorry. Cut out too quickly.
Taylor, yes.
George?
Jorge, yes.
And Gronster, yes. All right. So regular meeting, um, well, is postponed until we get out of that. And we go into non-public.